I call this meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. It will begin by a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We begin by having the administrator of the court secretary. Good morning, Jesse.
Good morning. The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia held their regular meeting at the courthouse endings on Thursday, January 30, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called and moved to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Donnie Kenny, Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Madge Almore, County Administrator Jennifer Dinkelman, Assistant County Administrator and Jacqueline Hankler, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Caliphs pressed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading up the minutes on motion by Donnie Kenny, second by Troy Brady, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of January 23, 2014, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Kenny, the commission approved the appointment of Democratic hard-time early voting cards as follows. Beatrice Adams, Irene Andrew, Nell White, Hannah Wenz, Judith Miles, Jewel Riffle, Philip Murray, Betty Hubner, Janet K. Wilson, William Shannon, and Phyllis Thacker for the special school levy election. The terms of employment is effective January 27, 2014 through February 5, 2014, at the rate of $7.25 per hour. After discussion on motion by Donnie Kenny, second by Troy Brady, the commission approved the following as ballot commissioners. Phyllis Jean Thacker as Republican ballot commissioner through May 13, 2014, then will be replaced by Patricia L. Adams for a term of two years. And Judith Martin as Democratic ballot commissioner through May 13, 2014, then will be replaced by Donna Matthews for a term of two years. After discussion on motion by Donnie Kenny, second by Troy Brady, the commission approved the order removing T.M.K. Miller Jones as his executrix of the estate of Vincent W. Miller, deceased, and the appointment of the sheriff of Upshur County as the administrator of the estate of Vincent W. Miller, deceased. After discussion on motion by Donnie Kenny, second by Troy Brady, the commission approved the order removing German S. William Wilson Collins as executrix of the estate of Nellma Barnett Collins, deceased, and the appointment of the sheriff of Upshur County as the administrator of the estate of Nellma Barnett Collins, deceased. After discussion on motion by Donnie Kenny, second by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to assign the state of West Virginia Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety sub-grant number EMW-211-S-039-11HHS as the obligated documents. The $21,000 grant is for the Upshur County Executive Department's funds for the trailer sustainment 2014. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four year information items. Number one, review of land and water conservation fund project, self-inspection report for project number 54-0230. Number two, NACO prescription drug discount card program, December 2013. Number three, correspondence from the State Tax Department by to amount estimate for fiscal year 2014-2015 statewide computer network, account number 408, amount of $498. Number four, Office of the State Audit should report on applying agreed-upon procedures of the Upshur County magistrate court, period ending December 31, 2014. Number five, agendas and/or notice of meetings as listed. Number six, pre-minute or financial reports, there were none. Number seven, order of equalization and review schedule. Number eight, meetings as listed. Number nine, appointments near or upcoming as listed for the recess 11:00 p.m. The commission reconvened at 1:00 p.m. That was the board of review and equalization for reviewing property files. The commission reassessed as order of review and equalization at 4:30 p.m. The commission reconvened at 4:30 p.m. with the help of the business. Motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Kenny, the commission may adjourn at 4:30 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? If not, I would request someone move to approve them.
Someone, second.
Having been approved, having been, motion had been made and approved, I would take a vote. Those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the move has passed and the minutes are approved. I'm getting the hang of it. Takes a little while here. We're all guys. Yes, 17 years.
You're moving right on.
Well, there we go. We have a 9:15 appointment with the, let's see, I think with Mica and Sheriff Solomon through the community corrections program. It is now 9:14, but I think we could push it up a little bit if you wish to. I'm sorry, Benny, I'm sorry, you're right. The fire department is not.
He's better looking than you. That's why, that's why. You know where is mine.
That's quite all right.
We got cats aside of the party.
That's right. They only.
Happens every time, Billy.
I would say it's my.
We need to get a better explosion.
Thank you, Benny, sorry.
That's quite all right. That's quite all right.
First of all, what I'd like to do is, as many of you in the audience don't know who the speakers are and somebody in the press doesn't, can you please identify yourself in the position that you hold?
Sure will. My name is Benny Azrotta, I'm the president of the Upshur County Fire Department Association and also the fire chief of the department. Why we're here today is, just short and brief, I'm going to be up here very little when Mitch is coming up, but we all always, and everybody, you all don't always agree, we don't always agree, but there is one thing that we agree on is the safety of our firefighters. So, we have come up with a plan, and it is getting worse with communications and radio traffic and whatever, to keep our firefighters safe on scene. So, we've come up with a plan, and we'd like to present it to you here in a little bit, that I believe will pretty well put the icing on the cake, as I say, as to what we need as a fire service to protect our firefighters so they can do their job to protect the citizens of Upshur County and preserve property. So, with that being said, we have, you are doing the right step, that you've already started with the high-band legs going in, and I believe that's going to create a lot better situation for us as to being paged, because, I mean, right now, some of our departments have went to call people and tell them, hey, we got paged, I know you couldn't hear. You know, because they're in places where they don't have cell phone service, so they're only getting the text page, and their pages aren't working, portables aren't working. So, we've got departments that are having to call some of the members, if they never respond all the time, and say, hey, we have a call, you need to get. And we done that back in the 60s and 70s when you didn't have comm center. So, you know, we don't want to go back that way, we need to move forward. So, I think this wireless link that they have sorted, that you all sorted and agreed upon doing, definitely needs to be finished, because it's going to, it's going to create a place where we can have either low band or high band in our radio systems to where if one's not working, the other one's mad. So, well, I think that was a good move when you all departed, and I thank you for agreeing to do that. On the second part of it is, if we can't hear our pages, we don't know where we need to go, so therefore we cannot protect the commander. But if, once we get on scene, if the radio traffic on those two frequencies is so bad, then we can't hear our inside guys, and we can't know what they need. And we had a call, French Creek, just for instance, that the guys inside, they didn't really run out of water, their hose jack came. But in that instance, when he hollered and said, hey, I'm out of water, he was inside a building and it was burning, and when you're inside a building burning, no water, it's, it gets real exciting real quick. So, he couldn't get his communication from inside the house outside. So, the way we've come up with a system here, I think, and it's going to utilize everything that's already there that the state has, is a digital system for our radios. On those radios, they have a panic button, that if a firefighter does go down, he can hit that button, and if we don't hear it, comm center has a radio that they monitor just for fire service in a digital round.
Is, question, when the person hits the button, does that identify the particular firefighter by a number or by a classification or something?
It can, yes.
So, they get multiple firefighters inside?
Depending on the radios you get, yeah. And it can also have a GPS unit to tell you exactly where they're at, if you have that type of system. Most generally, we know in an area of a house sometimes, and in logic, follow the hose in usually, if they stay with their hose like they're supposed to. So, but it's just going to enable us to be able to communicate better without having the traffic. When we were at, we had a call, three departments on it, a fourth department was called out for an EMS call with difficulty breathing or unconscious person or something, whatever it was. And with all that going on, is why those communications could not get out of the house to the people that needed to know that he didn't have any water. So, that was minor, but it could be big. But I'm going to be done here, I'm going to let Mitch come up and tell you the ins and outs of it a little better, and see where we can go from there, but I appreciate your guys' time, and I hope you highly consider this for the safety of our firefighters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben.
Well, I'd like to say I come bearing gifts, but you guys don't be better than that.
You'll have to identify yourself, I guess, Mitch, for the viewing audience and the press.
I'm Mitch Stacy, I'm a fire chief of the Buchanan Fire Department, and I'm here today on behalf of the Upshur County Fire Fighters Association in conjunction with Benny. I prepared a little thing I'd like to, like to read to you. As a fire chief and someone that's responsible sometimes for nearly 100 guys on something that's as chaotic as a fire scene, I keep, there's nothing more stressful than worrying about the safety of your firefighters, and if you can't communicate with your firefighters, and you can't keep track of your guys, you don't know what's going on, it's a very, very, very scary situation. I like to be at home at night and lay down and think that I've done my best, but I just can't imagine, I look at Notre Fort and I can't imagine what's going through those guys' minds, and I hope and I pray to God every day that I'm never in that situation where I have to be accountable for something that's happened to one of my firefighters. I've had guys get hurt, and I've seen guys being banged up all the time, but fortunately, that's been the most serious thing that's happened, and for those of you don't know, it's a very, very, very scary and stressful situation, and so that's something we want to address, our goal is to keep our firefighters safe and to do our job better, so. I'm just going to read a little bit of it, because I'm not that good with speaking, but the problem we have is due to the increased number of calls and the required number of agencies required to respond to the same call. Our far-ground radio system is now unsafe. It is becoming impossible for our firefighters operating on the interior infrastructure to maintain radio communications. We currently only have two radio frequencies in Upshur County for fire department operations, and a possibility exists that the communications center cannot monitor our second frequency at all times. This second frequency is also used by the West Virginia Division of Transportation inspectors. Our far-ground personnel can no longer be expected to operate on our main dispatch frequency, it is not safe. As Benny highlighted, there was recently an incident where interior firefighters ran out of water, due to other fire departments being paged on the same frequency these guys were operating on the interior of a building, their calls were unanswered. Compared this to you needing an ambulance because your mother's having a heart attack, you call 911 and get no answer. The wireless network that is to be installed will help with another high-band frequency, but because it can be interrupted by a communications system broadcasting, it is not failsafe. Currently, there's only one high-band frequency in use, and that is the frequency that the Buchanan Fire Department uses on its far-ground operations. And I want to use a little, when I say far-ground operations, in the fire service, when we're talking about far ground, we're talking about boots on the ground. This communications problem that we're discussing today for far ground has nothing to do with the comm center dispatching us, ordering our pages, it has nothing to do with fire trucks talking back and forth, it has nothing to do with fire trucks talking to the communications center. So, when I use the term far-ground operation, that's a, that's an industrial term for us, so when I use the term far-ground communication, what we're discussing today is guys who are actually on the scene of the murder incident, it's not, it's guys who are in our boots on the ground. The frequency that the Buchanan Fire Department has is not monitored by the communications center at this time. Interior radio communications must be monitored by someone other than on-scene commander for a firefighter to remain safe. Statistics show that most interior mayday situations are heard by dispatch centers and not far-ground personnel. We wish to continue with the county's plans for radio communications in regards to paging a high-band usage. At this time, we feel that the county's plan for future usage of the digital radio system will be the best solution for our far-ground situations. These radios are already partially in use in the county bar, all first-hand officers, Upshur County EMS, and the Buchanan Fire Department is using them on a limited basis. We feel for future usages is a much better and in the long run, cheaper solution. For every channel needed for high-band radio usage, a new frequency and repeater will be required to be purchased and installed. This is added maintenance and installation. With the digital radio system that we're talking about today, everything is already in place, and all we need are radios. The system is currently maintenance and cost-free for all those using it. That means that system is there, the sheriff's department is using this every day, at no cost to anyone. These radios would be equipped with a mayday function that would allow a firefighter to push a button, and activated tone would notify everyone monitoring the channel, including the communications center, that an emergency situation was occurring. These radios can also be equipped with a function that would allow an incident commander to activate an activation tone that would alert all interior firefighters to evacuate the building they are operating on. Here's where I would like to pay attention. We know, and mine and I work, I know that this is the time of year that you're starting, Megan's starting her budget preparations, and that's why we're here. We'd like to, as the Upshur County Fire Fighters Association, what we would like to do is see this plan implemented over a two-to-three-year period. We're not here asking for billions of dollars for that, and we'll ask you for a little bit with my business. We think that there's a system in place with the high-band frequency, and that's being installed now. That's going to take care of the phone line that we have trouble with, and that will give us one extra repeater system.
I think we're awaiting approval for the FC city.
Well, I just got a letter, the radios are reporting, and Enable Base have not filed any objections, so which went from the inspection division, the FCC, it's now in the hands of the licensing bureau, so as soon as they get that license back to us, we'll be good to go. High-band is okay, and that's going to take care of our dispatching, and hopefully with this, maybe at some point in time, we can phase out our low-band radio system, which is a cost savings to us. The less radios, less stuff, as fire departments have to maintain, the more money we can spend on something. Radio communications are very expensive, they're very complicated, and you know, technology today, they change, and change, and change. The digital radio system we're talking about today, if you would have given me one of those three years ago and said, that's going to be what I had to work with on the far ground, throw it out the door, I thought they were unsafe, and they didn't have the bugs worked out of them. These radios used to be $3,000 apiece when they first came out, now you buy them for a thousand bucks. The thing that makes them so unique is they can be programmed to perform any type of function, anything you want to do. Once you get them, and if you ever want to change anything, all you gotta do is go back to your supplier, you get somebody reprogrammed, look it up in the computer, reprogram it for you. We also would like to have, in the future, we think, and in talking to our radio personnel, that it'd be beneficial if we have a high-band base station and one of these digital bases in each fire station throughout the county. We're not asking for that this year. What we're asking for this year is immediate fix to our dangerous situation we have. And we'd like to respect the request that this year's budget includes funds to purchase few of these radios to be distributed to our county fire departments. We would also like to request that for the next two years, if you think about funding, about funding in place to fund high-band radios and the digital base station for each fire station in Upshur County. The amount that we would like to request this year is a amount of $38,000 to purchase 42 of these radios. I've received a quote from a radio service, so these numbers are, I'm giving you numbers that are pre-actual number. Actual, the quote was 38, was $37,800. We'd like to ask for a one-time budget appropriation in this year's budget for $38,000 to purchasing radios. These radios, I know there'll have to be some accountability, and that's stuff that will have to work out, but the reason we're here today is, I know it's budget time, you need to get your ducks in the road for line items and stuff that are being prepared for your budget, so that's why we're here today. We thought probably six radios for each department, with our automatic mutuality agreements that we have now, if we go with structured fire, that's automatic for each department, that should get us 18 radios there. I think for the immediate, immediate timeframe, I think that would be an adequate number for us to start with and go from there.
Now, these will be handheld radios?
These will be handheld radios. Firefighter can carry his pocket, it'll look something like this, this is not one of them, it'll look similar to that, it will be his pocket, have a bell, Michael. Myself and Joey Baxter with the Buchanan Fire Department took on the digital radios, and we have, communication inside a building is very tough, and just due to the makeup of some of the buildings in Buchanan, we went the other day and talked, and we, in the Buchanan Fire Department, know that we have areas in the city, our first two areas, that we can't communicate because of the makeup of the building, radios, computer. We went to the Buchanan man of high-rise, we talked to one of those radios from the elevator shaft, that's unheard of. We went to St. Joe's Hospital, and normally when we get off the fire engine, and we walk through the front door of that hospital, our radios just go crazy, it's because of all the electronics, the lighting, the computer. We took one of these radios and went to the dungeon, as I call it, remote part of the basement in a hospital, and talked with no problem. We talked to the dispatch center, who knew, they were helping us with the test, and I want to thank them for that. We also had one of our firefighters who was stationed in a grade school, going through his daily chores, was also monitoring one of those radios, and he heard us. We went to the French Creek Grade School, I know the communications are terrible in schools. We went to the French Creek Grade School, and I talked on a local radio from inside the French Creek Grade School to another fireman in the Tenerton Grade School on a local radio, on a local radio. So, we know, we know that it works. These radios are not going to be in fire trucks, they're not going to be monitored by everybody, they're going to be monitored by incident commander, and the communications center is going to be monitoring as well. It's hard for an incident commander on a fire scene to monitor radio. For those of you that have never been on a fire scene, it's, I refer to it as organized chaos. It's very chaotic, there's a bazillion things going on, it's loud and it's noisy. The problem, and the reason we want these radios, we also want the communications center to be able to monitor those. The first few minutes of a far-ground operation are the most critical. That's the point when our firefighters in our building has an incident commander, you've got to make a decision, you're going to let those guys stay in there and fight it out, or you monitor the situation, say, these guys are getting handed to them, we've got to get them out of the building. That happens within the first few minutes of an incident. And the first few minutes of an incident is when the incident commander's busy doing all kinds of stuff. We, it's no secret we have limited manpower, it's not uncommon for a working fire to have three guys or four guys. The incident commander, whomever it is, me, Benny, whoever, doesn't have the luxury saying, I'm going to be the incident commander, who's going to stand here and talk on the radio. It doesn't work that way, because you're going to be pulling hose. It's contrary to popular belief, it is, you've got to actually work a little bit. And things usually go wrong within the first few minutes of an incident, because that's when we're getting there, when things are the worst. So, that's why it's critical that somebody else other than far-ground personnel be able to monitor this radio. That's why it's important to have that mayday activation button, if a firefighter gets in trouble, it may be the communications center, it may be, I may not hear, they may say, Mitch, you've got a mayday activation from radio, blah, 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 or from firefighter Rafferty. That lets me know that something's going wrong. I don't want to miss that, I don't want to miss that call. I don't want somebody of our ability to experience what we have experienced. The other day was, I won't say it was a close call, it was just, we just had an incident, but there, we have had several incidents where we can't communicate. And it's not so much of a problem as individual fire, individual fire departments were pretty good as long as there was only one of us there, but it's when we get there collectively that we have an issue. And when we're there collectively, that means that there's something terribly, terribly, terribly going on. So, again, we'd like to ask you respectfully, thanks about putting this money in the budget to help us this year. I'll be glad to come back and meet with Megan and whoever it is, when you sit down and start doing your, I'll be glad to come back, as I know Benny will, we'll be glad to come back and talk to you anytime. We just, we'd like to have your support on this matter. Like I say, it's not something for every year, we're hoping maybe next year, we'll take care of this problem next year, we'll come back and look for some base stations. But I'm here today about the most dangerous, critical part.
Mitch, this is appropriate time of year to bring forth requests like this. I appreciate your, and certainly other commissioners appreciate your, your bringing this to us with the background information. I suggest that we follow your recommendation, that we do meet to discuss the potential, I do know this, and other commissioners are aware of this, that our appraiser, assessor, excuse me, our assessor has advised that, we haven't got the final numbers yet, but we're going to have a lean year this year. Severance tax is down, so we won't be dealing with a leaner budget, leaner amount of money to put into the budget. But I, you know, confident that, you know, public safety is a very, very important aspect of.
Well, and that's the reason we're asking for, we're not, we didn't come here today and say, hey, give us $2,000, we said, I said, them guys are not plus out of the building, they go up, but we'd like to implement this and plan, you know, next year it may not be $30,000, it may be, if we can't do it, we can't do it, but I would just ask you, anything you can to fund that project, at least maybe share a bit with us.
Let me ask you this.
Is our work department safe?
Is there a potential for cost sharing possibly between the department's fire fee and the county general fund?
Well, I'll speak on my behalf, fire departments are straight from buy with the county fire fee now, the money that they use, a lot of these departments doesn't pay their insurance, or they get that county fire fee check, and they get their county fire fee check, and they're saying, yeah, exactly, we can make our truck payment. So, most of your county fire fee money is, the fire department gets to do, say, yeah, we got to take, because it's already earmarked and spent, so you have to take several thousand dollars out of the fire department's lean budget, I mean. You know, some of the volunteer fire departments are struggling, you know, take, take $10,000 out of their annual operating budget, do this at this time isn't realistic. It may be practical to do J.C. over a 10-year period, but we have an immediate problem now in communication, and that's the bad thing about this project, when you're talking about firefighter safety, I mean, you've got to do it or not do it, I mean, you can't, you just can't get one or two here, one or two there. In radio communications, either everybody can talk, everybody can't talk, it's just hard to piecemeal that in. And for fire departments to start taking money out of their fire fee receipts, it's just, you know, really not a practical solution.
How does this work? Explain a little bit about the interoperable radio system, because I thought that was going to help eliminate a lot of the communication dead spots.
Okay, the only, this is the system I'm talking about, the digital radio system is slash, is the IRP system. That is the, that is the plan that you folks from the county have, maybe I use the wrong word, digital radio, IRP. We're talking about the same thing, yes. Yes, it's nothing new, it's something that you guys have been preparing for, Steve has it, the comm center, the sheriff's department is using. It is, what I'm talking about is radios that are on the interoperable, are interoperable radios.
Well, I thought, I thought there were some that were distributed.
Those are mobile units for the fire trucks, not portables to go in.
Oh, okay, so, but that'll be the same type of radio?
Yes, exactly.
Only those will be in the truck, those are on handheld radios.
Yeah, we're not, Donnie, we're not, we're not swaying any way to the left or the right of the counties, the plan that you all have in place, and the plan that Dirk and Steve and the folks doing the communications come up with. We're on track, we're on board, we're running right down the same track with them.
This request deals strictly with firefighter safety, is what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
Now, is that, is this something these handheld radios that the Buchanan, a department already has, or are they going to get, Buchanan going to get some?
Some of them, we currently have three of these handheld IRP radios in our possession. They were, part of them were got with the grant. I knew you were going to ask before, you're going to be concerned about funding city firefighters, and that's probably a legitimate question, but there is money in the city's budget this year, I've already been requested to, or we're required to complete. I've already been requested or we're required to complete my budget. I do have money in my budget this year. We're going as a Buchanan Fire Department to do radio upgrades, but you've got to remember when you're talking about the Buchanan Fire Department, the city's a very small section of what we serve. Our career firefighters are leaving the city of Buchanan to go on these ends and help these other fire departments and go out into the rural area beyond the city limits of Buchanan, so. I just, I just want to talk about firefighter safety, I just don't want to start throwing lines at them.
Right, right now, the situation is, is if Mitch comes to our area, he has six guys, we got six guys, we can't communicate to each other because our radios aren't staying.
We can drive them down the road, but once we get off the fire-
Once we get off the fire truck. So this is going to enable all the fire departments to, if they have to come together, they can all communicate together. And that being said, if it's a big incident and we need to communicate with sheriff's department, EMS, whatever, we can all talk on one radio and do the same thing. You know, if I need to holler at the sheriff's department, say, hey, we need a guy up here right now, we got a person going ballistic on us, I can get him up there. But as it stands right now, we can't. We can't, we can't contact and talk to anybody but our department. I think mine and Gary's right now, we can talk to each other on a few radios we've got, but it's not like being able to bring 100 people together and have communications between all 100 people.
This will actually, what Benny says, want to free up some of the work on the folks at the comm center. They may have to listen to, they're going to have to listen for traffic, I mean, it's there and well, they're the communications, you know, that's part of the job, I guess, is listening to radio. But a lot of this stuff, they're not going to have to be relaying information. This is Mitch, could you tell me that instead of going to the comm center with these radios, it will be able to do everything pretty much directly?
What you're describing, what you've been describing in terms of lack of communication and departmental communication was evident at 9/11. So the police departments, the fire departments, emergency team crews could not communicate with each other at that scene.
I'd like, I'd like, I thought about it when I said, I'd like to take this radio and let each of you stand up and holler mayday, mayday, and pretend that you are in a worst environment at a worst time of your life. I've been stuck in burning building. It is the most horrific time of your life, I promise you. If you holler on that radio and nobody answers, it's not getting any better, I promise you that, so.
Thank you.
I'll get off my soapbox now. We appreciate your time and you keep me in mind because I won't let you go away.
We will get together with-
And we'll chat with Megan and we'd like to sit down and have some further discussion.
Perfect time to do it. Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Benny and everyone else, I appreciate it.
I'll make one announcement for the fire service. Our Citizens Fire Academy will be starting on-
Somebody come up here and-
Okay. I forgot, Gary, sorry.
Don't forget to identify yourself here.
I'll try. Hey, Jason. Do you have a few members you are?
My name is Gary Martin, Chief Banks District Fire Department. And our annual Upsher County Citizens Fire Academy will be starting on March the 4th. Run from six to nine for 10 weeks, one night a week, every Tuesday night. We will have a brochure together and scheduled, we'd like to see Commissioner Brady and Megan come out and attend that. WDU Fire Service Extension will be doing the program. I'm just trying to wrap up when we can have the burn trailer and airplane so we can get those weeks scheduled before we do the brochure. So I'm encouraging anyone that would like to attend, please do that.
Having attended previous academy functions, it's very worthwhile. I know that others present have also attended, it's a very worthwhile, informative program and one that people can benefit from.
At the meeting last night, there was a couple there that attended last year and the wife had told her husband, well, I'll do it the first night, but after that, I don't, I don't think I'll do it well. She drove him the rest of the year. She already got into it and he liked it too. It was, it was well worth it. I know Katie did it a few years ago. It's a, it's a very good program. It really executes stuff that's on what gets on in the fire service. Anyone that's, that's in way, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your service. Next, I believe we have Jacob Reeder, Deputy Intern. To discuss application for relief from erroneous assessment.
Just had thought of petition for correction of erroneous assessment with Carter Roig. And the situation was that Carter Roig had personal industrial property that was located in Upsher County. It was initially reported that it was located in Randolph County as of 7/1/2012 for tax year 2013. However, it was actually located in Upsher County, so I'm just asking that you correct that erroneous assessment and assess that property here in Upsher County by order.
They move. Second.
Having both been moved and seconded, may I have a vote? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have our little discussion. Our next appointment at 1:00 for Board Legalization Review, we'll have those guys for discussion. First discussion will be regarding duty correction of grant proposal, application for 2014, 2015. Mike, identify yourself in your capacity.
Mike Harris with the Air Force Center out here. I just want to come to you all today, we've always previously written a grant for Lewis, Upsher and Braxton Counties. At our last board meeting, which was last Monday, it came off a general discussion of maybe just looking at the 26 judicial circuit as in covering Lewis and Upsher and letting Braxton write their own grant, assisting them in writing that grant, but trying to just take care of our two counties now. We have a board meeting this evening that the only thing on our agenda is to decide whether we want to keep, you know, keep the three counties or drop it to two. With you all being our fiscal agent, you know, it comes down to your all's decision. What, you know, if the board decides something, it comes to you all, if you don't decide it, you go and goes back to the board. If I answer any question you have about it, issues we faced, we, I mean, if any of you all want to know, Ronnie and I appear to-
What necessitates your consideration?
We've had a lot of issues financially previously over, I think ever since we've been down there. They've never paid their entire money cash match until this year.
This is Braxton County?
Yes, this is Braxton County. We've had issues with financials down there, we've had issues with the number of referrals that we have down there, so it's extremely hard to pay two staff members to sit down there whenever there's 15 clients. You know, we've got 100 in Lewis County for one staff member. So number of referrals, financials, we've, we've struggled. I mean, it's always, seems like there's always an issue down there. We're not getting referrals, we're not getting money. You know, we're half a second guess ourselves now with everything we do because there's some people down there that are calling, you know, calling Charleston on everything we do. And I'm really afraid of, I'm afraid for the integrity of our other two programs that the issue we face down there are going to kind of, for lack of better terms, give us a black eye for our other two counties up here.
Have you calculated the funding shortages over a period of time that the county's been working under one program?
We, whenever I was off recently, didn't you figure out that they had, it was like 30 or?
I believe, don't quote me on this, I believe it was $28,000 that, that, that they hadn't paid over the last four or five years. You know, in regards to, you know, we need to jeopardize our grant for, you know, for trying to keep up down there. We've, we've had, you know, four or five years to try to get it to work and try to make it work and it just seems like it, you know, it just keeps going the opposite way of where we would like it to be. It's, it's a different circuit. Braxton County has also wanted to take on Clay County. We just don't want to take on another county at this point, so we pretty much recommended that we separate and just leave us under the 26 judicial and maybe they can go ahead and approach their funding with Clay County.
Well, and they presented to us that at some point they plan on breaking off from us and writing their own grant in their own circuit. They said it would probably be next year sometime and we proposed, why not do it now? You know, let us take care of us, you guys take care of you. That seems to be Charleston's standpoint too, is take care of yourselves, you know, don't, don't sink all your time, you know, into something that, you know, you're struggling with. We have a representative from Charleston coming to our board meeting tonight to answer any questions, but-
When's the, when's the grant due for the next fiscal year?
March 5th.
So March the 5th, so-
So three full weeks is when I have to write the grant. I'm not going to start on it yet because I don't know who to write a grant for, so I'm hoping that this evening they will know.
So, so if this come about, then Braxton County would have the same amount of time as you do to write a grant.
Yes.
And if Clay wanted to go in with Braxton, then they would have time to take it, take a ready and grant for those two counties.
Well, that and, you know, they've already have a copy of my entire grant packet that I wrote last year. So they have all of our numbers, all of our financials. And like our discussion at the last board meeting, we said that I'd be more than willing to help them, you know, tell them where to look, assist them any way I can. You know, we don't want to end on bad terms down there by any means, but we're just trying to look out for the betterment of our two counties and we're going to receive a seven and a half percent cut from what we got last year. The state, all the programs are supposed to receive a cut, so we've got to look out for that too.
So what are your, you talk about your clients that you have, what are the number of clients from each of the three counties?
Well, I can give you a rough estimate here. Since 2010 in Braxton County, we've only received 122 referrals in a four-year period. Last year alone in Lewis County, we received 129. So in one year, Lewis County outdid-
Four years, right?
Yes, and this year alone, we've received 80 here in Upsher County.
And we've only received 20 in Braxton this year?
Yeah.
Since the start of-
20, 80 and 129.
Yes, sir.
Yes, well, yes, the start of June, yeah. So I just wanted to bring to your all's attention that you all are our fiscal agent. I know that buddy represents you all on our board, so I hope to see you this evening.
I will be there. Do you need a, do you need a consensus from us so that when you go to your board meeting, you can say, is that what you need from us or what exactly you need from us? You need a consensus of, we believe that we should go back to the votes in Upsher.
I think that would be very beneficial to be able to present to the board this evening to say, you know, they're our fiscal agent, they fund the money, you know, they make the final decisions. This is, this is how they feel. Because what's, what might happen if the board votes to keep them and you all don't want to, then I may be out another week and a half, two weeks before I can even start off a grant. You know, I've already only got three weeks to write it, so we can get a general consensus, that would be-
Depending on the decision that's made at the evening's meeting, if the decision is made to break apart, then we would approve that, we would request that we approve that in the future.
Yes, yes.
But today, you're willing to accept a consensus of the commission as to whether or not we would support the dissolution of the current means by which we're working.
Go back to the way we've been doing, it's just Lewis and Upsher, as the same, well, buddy, you're on that board, what's your, give us your counsel there, a wise one.
My consensus with this, since it's been a problem with Braxton County for all these years and I've been at almost all the meetings, my consensus is now is being on the member of the board and being a county commissioner, I think it would be best for everybody to go back to where it was, Lewis and Upsher. And when Braxton County write their own grant, because I know they have some issues, you know what I mean, it would be my opinion that consensus that we go back to the 26 judicial and take care of Lewis and Upsher, which is doing a lot better, would be my consensus.
And I would go along with that, so I think you have the consensus and we can take the issues.
Right, and I think that the knowledge that I have of the program and the way things have worked the last few years, I think the best thing for everyone. You know, and our, our chief concern is that if we make our system operate and we try it and you're willing to help them and they express a desire to go in with Clay, so they would, they would be in the, in their judicial circuit and I, I would get the same consensus though.
And services will remain there until June 30th, if that is the consensus at the board meeting tonight. The grant was until June 30th of 2014, so we will maintain services down there until then, if that is what the board decides to do.
And they paid, what's due?
They did pay this year.
Through June 30th, they paid up, although they've been short.
That is the only full payment we've received since we've been down there, yes.
And I assume that when Braxton funding is not forthcoming, that that shortage or shortfall is made out by the other two towns in operation.
Well, and the thing is too, and Commissioner Rafferty, you were a member of the board last year, we didn't get even our money last year until the beginning of May and June. So you, you famine for a complete year and then they give you your money and you have to spend that within that month. You know, so it just makes it tough. So then we put a deadline on the, the monies to be collected this year, they did not meet those deadlines, so we had, we put, you know, the board recommended to put another deadline, so they, they actually didn't meet that deadline either, so the boardmaker made a recommendation to shut the program down. The program was shut down in Braxton County and then they come to the next meeting and requested, they had the money then, and requested if they give us the money, could we open it back up? Well, the board elected to go ahead and, and do that since they had the money and the check there that evening. So it's just been, you know, it's, it's been a struggle. And you, you know as well, we would drop clear to Braxton and there would be Lewis and Upsher County people there and maybe one Braxton County member, so it's-
I agree with what you're saying.
You've got your consensus for tonight's meeting.
I do and I appreciate it and then I'll present back to the board.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you all. Thanks.
Okay, as I said earlier, the next appointment scheduled is for the Board Legalization Review at 1:00, so we'll continue with items for discussion. We have appointments with the Buchanan Upsher Airport Authority. We have one vacancy for the city and two vacancies for the county. So I would request anyone residing in the county, or the city for that matter, that has an interest in serving on the airport a full year, to contact either the county or the city to make those interests known.
But don't we have a recommendation?
Yes, I spoke with the board representatives and for the city vacancy, they would like to reappoint Bill Thomas. The two county vacancies, they, they've asked that because they have a loan that is attached in the annex, that we, that we have a commissioner representative on that board.
Okay, that's very good.
So they asked that we appoint-
Well, we guess who that'll be, you know who that'll be.
One of you, J.C., perhaps, and Phil Hoffman.
Well, I, I'll accept.
Well, the city, that's their appointment, Bill.
Right, the city, they have asked to appoint Bill Thomas and that's their vacancy, yes.
So, so we-
You still have one county.
Based on that recommendation, then, then I would move that we appoint J.C. and Phil Hoffman as down as our two appointees.
And those go through to-
So that fills us up there to 100% acceptable. Having been moved and approved, having been moved and seconded, both are approved.
No, but I was getting that attention. J.C.'s just trying to say the words in front of me, I do say that.
So having, all those in favor of the motion, if I was saying opposed, I guess I can stand you down now. It passes, we will run to the next information. Correspondence to the State Auditor and Chief Inspector Division, corrected page for the audit for the Health Department. Just basically states in the corrected page, the audit of the Upsher Buchanan Board of Health for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013. Please replace this page in your copy and discard the previous copy. And it's basically- Basically contains the budget and actual general fund. Do we know what the discrepancy was made?
I have not had a chance to actually compare those differences yet.
It looks like there was not as much coming from the federal government.
Right.
For one avenue was it, it said 48,395 and 36,460 or 11,200. So I'm sure it was.
Man, it's a.
Probably last Monday coming from the Big Daddy.
It reminds me, I'll go and come over there. Used to be a quote, used to be a video of the Big Daddy. Next, we have correspondence from West Virginia Division of Culture and History, the pool of the $10,000 grant for the circuit clerk regarding records management and preservation. And that particular grant is one that we've received several years now, I believe.
Yes.
For Brian De Day's office for microfilming and recording records that can be much easily stored and they're pronounced in much more space and private. So that's a good thing, because it requires that we maintain those records, I think, in perpetuity. So it's, records go back a long way, if you do need to maintain them.
And as it states, that's just an unofficial letter, so you will see that grant later again probably coming up.
So they will say it has been unofficially been approved.
Right. But one report.
The money will get here sooner or later. Next, we have a building permits for the month of January. It totaled almost half a million dollars, which is down from several months ago when we were at $1,002,000. But again, it's winter, the weather's been tough, and that might improve hopefully the coming months. Here are the road index as of February 3, 2014. That constitutes the names of all roads which are registered with our mapping and addressing system. So it's available for anyone who needs to have a road name if they come up with a necessity for naming a road, to come in, look at this, to determine whether or not that road has already been selected by someone else, or if there is a road that is similar in name to keep you from having to go through the motions of recommending that road, only to have it turned down or recommended to be turned down by the mapping and addressing department. Next, we have Upsher County Sheriff's Department with current balances within the financial statement of the period ending November of 2013. And also September, October, November, December.
Anything that's jumped out after making it to the debt or go pretty well where?
Some substantial amounts and certainly has substantial, it's a lot of this. Assessors valuation. Any other comments? And we have correspondence from protest engineers and environmental consultants regarding services available for view of water systems. I'm certain this was propagated on the issue that occurred down in Tada County and surrounding area relative to water safety.
This is something we might pass along if we have Megan to Jim Ferry and.
That's what I was thinking. He's doing a lot of activities right now with water, so I thought that he might be able to.
Might need some useful information to take in.
Exactly. And I believe that may be the end of our information. And there would be, are there any other comments by members of the commission?
You have anything to add?
No. Well, I would just say that this past Tuesday, Vivian Parsons, with the executive director of the County Commission Association, asked me if I would attend a house hearing, finance hearing on the governor's proposed 15% cut across the board on lottery proceeds, which there were 30 people signed up. I don't know that, someone said it was only 26, that's about it. But I spoke primarily because of the concern of cutting the infrastructure funds. They've, for several years, have appropriated $40 million statewide for infrastructure funds, which infrastructure funds in conjunction with small cities block grant is one of the two main sources along with our U.S. funds that we use in the counties for water line extensions and sewer line extensions. So, you know, to me, to cut that in half, $20 million, and as chairman of Region 7 Food and Development Council and vice president of Mountain Water Association, I've been involved for many years in the endeavor to extend water lines out to folks in the county. And as I pointed out to those few delegates that were there at the hearing, seemed like there were more people talking than there were delegates listening, but maybe that's the way. You know, as they've experienced recently in Charleston and the 300,000 people that have not had good safe drinking water for the last few weeks, have a good understanding of what it's like not to have potable water. And they should be more sympathetic to thousands of people across the state of West Virginia who have never had safe drinking water, never had a good supply of water, have to go to town to do their laundry, have to go buy drinking water, bottled drinking water, travel back and forth. And then for the legislation, having gone through this and understand firsthand the problems, not only social, but economic problems that caused, that they would even think about cutting the infrastructure funds for about $20 million? I mean, basically, when, as we've experienced here with Adrian PSD and now Deltonard PSD, it's years from the time they start and propose a project and started through the process, it's years before they get their money. And with what the state's proposing to do, it's going to be decades before they get their money. And because there's, I forget what the exact, it's like 130 or 150 million dollars in requests yearly from on water line extensions, and if you've got $20 million to play with, it's sad. So I don't know, there didn't seem to be a lot of support with the House or the Senate on this bill that the governor's proposing. There were people there from everybody, and it's amazing how many pieces they cut that lottery pie in. It was, the lobbyists for the County Commission Association had a color printout that, he got it at a senate hearing somewhere and picked it up, but it wasn't for the public. But I mean, it had, it had the buckets of everywhere the lottery money went to, and it's just amazing from, and I'm surprised it wasn't someone there from the senior citizen center. I'm not sure who's on there, who our representative is, but I would have thought it would have been someone there from the senior citizen center because they're talking cutting 15% to senior citizens also. There were people there that, you know, owned the dogs, owned the horses, have stables, and they all talked with the reduction in revenue because of the competition of other states. And then you take a 15% cut on top of that, there's lots of them, they just have to go out and visit. So there's a great economic, and the other thing that was pointed out is over the last few years, and this is something I pointed out to the senate finance chair a couple weeks ago, is the state over the last few years has cut business taxes and the food tax to the thing of $425 million, reduced revenues to the state of West Virginia, which, you know, I'm from business and I'm not sure about the food tax. I think it was probably one of the fairer taxes there was, but anyway. But for the state to cut $425 million and now then to come back and say, okay, counties, you need to share in the reduction of lottery revenue. Well, the counties are already sharing in the reduction of revenues coming into the state. There are issues to share in that. We've already lost money because of the reduction in people gambling, basically. But they're saying on top of that, that we want to cut you another 15%. And I believe Upsher County, I think I saw the figure $200,000 that we get, so that would be another $30,000 reduction. That's enough to buy the radios that Mitch was talking about, or almost enough right there in that reduction. Plus, as J.C. alluded to, when our assessment came up, we're down $83 million in assessments. And according to her calculations, I didn't check her math, but she's usually pretty close. That means that just the portion of the Upsher County Commission deals with will be $400,000 less than we had last year. So, you know, we're looking at some pretty major, and we don't, we still don't have, I don't believe, our public utilities in, so we don't know, that's probably going to be down. So we're going to have, we have a potential to be down half a million dollars in tax dollars that we have to work with. So it's kind of scary when you think about that. And fortunately, we've put a little bit away when things were good, but still, that's a huge chunk of change that you don't have to work with. And everybody's, that we've been funding, believes that they need the same funding as they had last year. So it's going to be a real challenge. It's going to be, it's going to be an interesting budget session and, you know, and I understand, because I was in the party room years ago, and I understand how critical communication is. And I think, I don't know, I know Jim Ferry has gotten some grants, some radios to grant funds, I think we need to look at that. We need to look at any way we can to help them, but this is just the beginning of requests for not only what we've been giving people, but for no doubt additional requests of funding. So it's kind of like the infrastructure council, you've got more requests and less money to deal with, and that's when the challenges really start. And that's when, I'm very thankful I'm going off the mission and not coming on. That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you.
But I think it's very important that everybody is within their budget. I mean, you expect all this free money to come, and we've been getting grants, and I've seen a lot of the grants come by, you know what I mean, that you got. And we've been used to free money, and now everybody's tightening up in the state. We'll sit on the federal side too. We're going to have a little bit more freedom than we have here. And the only thing I can say as one of the commissioners, I'm a firm believer that we need to live within our budget and not count on something that you don't know for sure is going to be there. Because they are cutting everything, state is from 7% up to 25% on some of the programs, and it hurts everybody. And everybody's for a balanced budget. But the minute it reaches out and touches somebody's program or whatever, well, they don't need to cut that, you know what I mean? But I'm a firm believer that we do need to live within our budget. That's all I.
Any questions, darling?
Yes, could you tell me again, those two numbers that you mentioned, 83 million and I believe you said 400,000. Now, 83 million was.
Is the reduction in commercial property values. That's the values. Forty, 400,000, according to assessment estimate, 400,000 is the county commission portion reduction that we'll have to deal with.
We won't know until the final figures come in first part of March.
Right. Those are expected to be figured out. What they do point to, they point to the fact that we're going to have less money to, but.
Certainly.
Okay. Once we get the, do we have any, have we heard from the county clerks to win wheel here on the public utilities?
I asked her, I think that she said it was March, or either end of February or early March, I believe.
Probably right before we start, but.
And I actually wanted to let you all know that you'll probably see a request for a bid coming out soon from me. We have a condensing unit under the annex that we knew for a while we would have to replace, but it turns out we need to replace it now. So that's another couple hundred thousand dollars.
That's a substantial payment. For those of you who are candidates for county commission, welcome to the, welcome to the race. It's a thing you need to be thinking of as you assume office, facing it. Not very popular choices sometimes. Anything else?
Oh, we got two minutes.
That will term until the, or recess until the 1:00 board of equalization review. And we have bills to pay.
You do.